It's understood in the conversation on chronic homelessness that sixty-five isn't really the starting point for a senior. If you're homeless, it's really more like fifty. You age differently on the street. So, but we do see, you know, in our community, more seniors here in general. And so this will probably impact us faster than twenty, thirty.
Yeah, I figured I would.
All right, and so then on to specific requests.
Yes. With the camera over there?
The number of people camping, thirty percent of folks were hoping to get camping gear, including tents and cookstoves, that type of stuff, tarps and things. Seventeen percent of folks asked for housing. And that, I think, is an important thing to note because that means that most folks know that there is no reason to ask. So as they arrive to the fair, we give them the opportunity to share with us what they think they might need, whether or not they know what's available. And so many people did not even consider that housing would be available. But that's accurate. There is no housing available at the Homeless Resource Fair.
Alrighty, I'll hand you back to JD.
Clothing, food, cell phones, gas cards, and transportation, haircuts, eye exams. It was nice to know that a lot of the things that we do work hard to get site there are valuable. So these are things people are asking for as they arrive, and we had a lot of those things covered. What we don't have covered is housing, and we need your help.
The specific question at the resource fair is in regards to housing at the resource fair? Or is it in general, if we could find housing for you, would you take advantage of it?
Right, the question is about like resources they would take advantage of, right? What they're looking for. So it's before they enter the fair, so it's not based on what is available. It's just sort of, how are you doing today? What do you need?
I would think nearly a hundred percent of them would say I want housing, and you don't get that answer?
Right, but it's more based on what you expect as an option, you know? So you kind of are, you test the waters and say, well, I really need a lunch, I need lunch, do you have lunch? You know? Jumping ahead to, I need a place to live, means that you kind of have faith that I have a place to offer. So it's sort of a lot of fear goes into not asking for, you know, because you're afraid it's not available.
Yeah, realistically, they know it's unavailable. And so when I speak with people about it, they'd say, oh, the Homeless Resource Fair, are you going to give me a home? Because that's what I need most. But realistically, no, we don't have homes to offer. But then we do have things, and we're talking about those things that we do have. So that's why when we asked them, they didn't ask because they know. So the feedback on services. As for the services received in the last three months, we have Sierra Wind with forty-nine percent, St. Vincent de Paul thirty-eight, Behavioral Health twenty-six percent, church or similar.
It's likely they don't know what those services are, and so they are not making use of them. So that's a challenge. That's an opportunity to increase awareness of what's available here now.
Would, I, Trixie, this is a problem for you. I find the Sierra Wind being forty-five thousand more unfamiliar with it.
Yeah, and it's...
Because they serve basic food and they're on the ground and level, like we think just by word of mouth.
Yeah, it is surprising, and like Small Change for Big serves a lot of wheels to a lot of people who weren't, who didn't know that, were unfamiliar with the name Small Change for Big, so I don't understand that, but I can guarantee that by the end of the resource fair, they know who we all are now.
Okay.
And I think that might be a reflection of that fifty-two percent people attending for the first time. A lot of folks are experiencing poverty in a new way right now. And so the folks who are served at Sierra Wind definitely know the deal up there, know how to get there and stuff. We're seeing new people that are recently impacted by homelessness, who have been in the area but haven't needed to access a drop-in center before. So if you say, do you remember where the old book mine was? They know that.
Yes, and Sierra Wind Wellness and Recovery Center is a mental wellness and recovery center. So, and we do serve our unhoused community, but we are primarily for mental health. So a lot of people aren't there receiving our services.
It is true that the stigma around receiving mental health services will keep folks who don't feel like they identify as needing mental health services from making their way up the hill to get a free lunch. Or clothing closet, I mean, there's a bunch of stuff there besides the free lunch, of course.
That they really need.
Right, right. And I think that's part of our responsibility as a community, is de-stigmatizing mental health services, so that it is less threatening to go and ask for help, regardless of whether you need a pair of shoes or to talk to someone like a therapist. But great question, Pat, thank you. All right, and then so on to participating agencies and organizations. Really exciting this year, we had twenty-eight organizations, churches, and providers that made up the horseshoe there in the park. And that included, I mean, everything from public health to, you know, local churches, the Planned Parenthood and the Pregnancy Help Center, tons of great resources there, all together in one spot in a sort of central way. So folks enter the park and they can spend their time within those resources. And it's just a really wonderful environment. And then we'll go on to sponsors. There's a little overlap. A lot of the sponsors attend the event, but not always. And so we want to, let's see, point out some of these. This year we did have sponsorship from Anthem, and that allowed us to provide a great deal of kickback to the attendees, and that's exciting. And the American Legion Ambulance and Post 108, they've been really supportive of this event, so we really appreciate that. Operation Care was our site sponsor this year, taking care of the requirements from the city to rent the park. And Small Change for Big was the fiscal sponsor this year, coordinating the sponsorship and paying the sound guy and that type of thing. On the far right, we have a quick little rundown. We've got Motherlode Monument, Creekside Methodist, Bestie Sanders, Supervisor Frank Axe, thank you, sir. Bunch of great input there, and those funds really make it so that we can provide a nutritious hot meal, you know? We're not cutting corners. When we were picking up food at one of the vendor sites, there was a diner there who I had a nice chat with, and at first he said, oh, they get Chinese food? Yeah, everybody gets Chinese food, yeah. Yeah, we all get a nice meal. Yeah, that's not going to do anybody any harm. So the sponsorship really makes a big difference, and it's a fun way to put your money to work right live in action. So we look forward to getting some more sponsorship for next year's event.
Yes, and we're going to talk about the passport to services. So when they come to the check-in book and they do their, the booth, they do their survey, and we give them a little wristband and a name tag and a passport to services, which is a card. And it has ten, it's number, it has ten numbers on it. So they have two chances to enter the drawing by visiting each booth and getting their ticket signed. If they visit five booths, that's one opportunity for the drawing, and if they visit ten booths, we can cut that ticket in half and enter them twice for the drawing. And so this is just to encourage them to go to each booth, to speak to our providers, and so they can see what type of resources that we have, and they can make that direct contact with them, as well as fill up their goodie bag with all the little items that our participants had at their booths.
And this is really a word-of-mouth community. So as each of these people engage in the process that Trixie described, they become an ambassador for those services to their peers. So even if their friend wasn't able to arrive and attend the fair and make use of the opportunities to engage with these services, now that person knows about them, and they go back to the park or wherever, you know, wherever they're camping, whoever they're staying with, and that trickles out. And so it is a direct line from the people who are trying to access the people in need to the folks who need them, and it kind of goes from there. So those agencies will experience an uptick in requests for services from this population, and it won't necessarily be from the person they talked to at the fair. And then, so I'll go over some of the, oh, yeah, back a little, thanks. We'll go over some of those prizes. We did, new this year for meals, to encourage folks to sit and stay and talk together, the first table to fill, everyone at that table got a choice of a gift card to like Jamba Juice or Subway, and that gives them an opportunity to get another fresh meal in addition to the one that they were there. But also, it kept them there at the table, talking to each other. We had hosts at those meals that were invited from the community to participate. Those would be folks that aren't currently homeless. And everyone had a really great time. That was a new model. We rented round tables for the event this year, and it was a very powerful way to shift the sort of grab-your-meal-and-scatter effect, which was happening at prior resource fairs. And I think that we will stick with that sort of fellowship dining meal model, and it was really pleasant. So also this year, we had a contribution from the Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Commission, and we decided to put those funds directly to stuff that would go to youth, since that's their focus, and the meals had already been sponsored. So we did pack up five backpacks that would be for youth twenty-four and under, you know, in the conversation on homelessness federally, if you're homeless and you're up to the age of twenty-four, you're still considered a youth. And so that's why we looked at that as the age break. But what we experienced this year was a little different. There were a number of youth ten and under at the fair, so we did not see a lot of young folks, say seventeen to twenty-four. We did see a lot of young families. So we will be preparing differently for that next year, but that was shaking for us. We saw a dozen or more kids under ten. And those would be kids representing families with other kids that were in school that day. So a lot of families are struggling right now. So we got the peer volunteers, which means folks who are either currently or have previously been homeless, volunteer with a specific role with us during the event. You'll get to meet one of them here today, and they sort of bottom-line a task, like the food tent or the free store, and then for that, they're able to earn a fifty-dollar stipend, and that was sponsored by ATCA. And then we also did have something new this year from Global Citizen, and he'll also be introducing himself in their project. But we have this, in the photo, you see one of the recipients. That's a solar charging system that will allow that couple who are living in a vehicle to prop solar out and get electricity to a unit, kind of like that mobile thing you jump your car with. But they can charge their cell phones, laptops, it comes, the whole system, Greg will kind of explain that, it comes with lights and everything, and it's really a game changer for someone who's like dry docking, living in a vehicle without other, you know, like a generator, that type of thing. So, and then along with that stuff, St. Vincent de Paul and Creekside Methodist provide a number of gas cards and specialized items, as well as laundromat vouchers and groceries vouchers. And then we'll go to the next one there. The meals this year were provided by Motherlode Market, Amador Axes and Eats, Rosebud's Cafe, Golden Dragon, Creekside Methodist Church, and Mariah Heights Seventh Day Adventist Church. And those meals were hosted and facilitated by one of our peer volunteers.
And then we have our leadership team, that's Ty Pulskant, myself, Trixie Smith, Hadley Lepla, our volunteer coordinator, and we had thirty volunteers, ages thirteen to seventy. Some just showed, we had so many people show up just to say, what can I do? And then we also had many scheduled to work there. But we're so thankful for all our volunteers.
Absolutely. Volunteership is robust here in this county, so if you are ever working on a project and you think, I'm not sure we'll be able to find the volunteers we need, let me know.
So our future goals, Amador County's Sixth Annual Homeless Resource Fair is scheduled for May eighteen and nineteen, twenty twenty-five. Your sponsorship, volunteer help, and support make a difference in the lives of our most vulnerable residents. Follow Amador County Homeless Task Force on Facebook for updates and invitations to volunteer.
So I'm starting at the bottom there. We have some takeaways, and so I'm just going to go ahead and read them. Benita helped put this slideshow together, and that was a big help. Empowering employers and job seekers alike to connect the dots between job readiness and gain full employment. By working together to facilitate employment wins for people experiencing homelessness, we create a pathway to economic stability and safer housing.
Feed the hungry, clothe the poor, equip the impoverished to navigate the press of day-to-day life as a means of intervention and mitigation in a community with increasing levels of poverty, unemployment, and homelessness.
Pooling resources ensures fiscal conservancy. A coordinated approach to mitigating the impacts of homelessness is more than a compassionate act, it's good business. Municipalities, public agencies, faith-based organizations, and residents of all socioeconomic backgrounds working together serve to effectively identify and address gaps in services unique to our rural community.
By prioritizing our most vulnerable residents, we can effectively meet the needs of those experiencing less critical needs by supporting housed residents facing the risk of homelessness.
Thank you for your time today and for listening to what we have to share. Thank you to our volunteers and our sponsors for making this event a success. It was fun to do something for the fifth time. For more information and to get involved, you're welcome to visit Sierra Wind Recovery and Wellness Center up on Argonaut Lane. They're there Monday through Friday. You're also invited to attend the monthly Homeless Task Force meetings, which happen the fourth Thursday at three-thirty at the Health and Human Services Building there on Conductor Boulevard in Conference Room A. And then if you're interested, you feel moved to make a fiscal or, you know, contribution of funds, that can be done either in person through Small Change for Big down at Rosebud's, that means you could bring your piggy bank in, or you can make digital donations at smallchangeforbig.org. And I do want to invite Leslie and Greg up, and Leslie's going to introduce herself. Leslie was our key volunteer at the Free Store and has been attending the Resource Fair since twenty eighteen.
Hi, like you said, my name's Leslie Miller, and I had an amazing time. I have been a drug addict for thirty-five years. I'm fifty-two now. Thanks to the Homeless Resource Fair and the love, the support, the encouragement that was given to me, the trust, I volunteered for the last five years also. This was my first year clean and sober. And it was totally different this year for me. The Homeless Resource Fair has so much to offer if it's something that you want. It took me five years to realize that clean and soberness was what I wanted. So after last year's, not this last one, but the one before, I decided to turn myself into the Gospel Center Rescue Mission and get myself off of drugs. I did a seven-month program. I'm now home, living in the Hope Home out by Grace Fellowship on Highway forty-nine. It's a clean and sober Christian home, amazing home. The house mom there is an amazing woman. Amazing opportunities to learn how to live a different life. I am now a volunteer at Amador Rides, giving, giving our community free rides to doctor's appointments here and around the tri-counties. So I'm a big part of NA. Today, I actually celebrate ten months clean and sober, and I really, I owe that to this Homeless Resource Fair and the love and the support that we received there from all the vendors, from Ty and Trixie, from Sierra Wind, the churches. I was able to go this year and just be an example for the ones that I used to live with, because I was one of the ones that lived out at the impound dam. I lived there for a year and a half. I swept the dirt. I wasn't a dirt-underneath-my-fingernails kind of girl, but the drugs kept me there. When I was talking about the mental health thing, we don't realize when we're using how much mental health is important. And I never realized that until I became clean and sober and got mental health help. I was diagnosed paranoid schizophrenic with manic bipolar, manic depression. And today I can say I'm beating that. I'm beating that because I put the drugs down and I'm changing, being a different part of life. I want to be a success story to Amador County. Amador County is a county who put up with a lot of my crap and a lot of my troubles with law enforcement, courts, of course, and I'm here now making up for that. And I look forward to next year's Homeless Resource Fair because I will be there. This year I ran the Free Store, so I had a lot of contact with a lot of the people that I used to hang around with, I used to live with. And I've, I had people, I still have people today coming to me, Leslie, what program did you go to? What was it that caused you to want to go? And I keep telling them how worthy and how important they are. Because when we're out there and we're picked on or, you know, whatever, we get ourselves in trouble, we're not believed in, but we don't believe in ourselves. So I have a lot of plans that I want to help with the Resource Fair next year. We're going to talk that over later during planning, but what an honor it is to be standing here in front of you, gentlemen, and I appreciate you having me. This Homeless Resource Fair is going to do big things if we just continue, and housing is a big need for the homeless people, but also so is drug addiction help, you know, programs. So thank you for having me.
Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you.
How you doing, everybody, gentlemen, madam? Can I approach? My name is Gregory Cates. I'm with Global Citizen. We're based in Pine Grove. I'm an infrastructure designer. And so this product here, we had the opportunity and the privilege of volunteering at the Resource Fair. Leslie is a good example of why this thing's important. So that item there is basically a portable power station. It's a thirty-amp hour battery. Comes with a solar panel. So when you think about it in the case of unhoused folks, if you don't have electricity, what do you really have? How do you access resources from social services, or how do you apply for a job, et cetera? So speaking to some of the statistics on Ty and Trixie's, so fifty percent of the folks are in cars, and the importance was gas cards, for example, and those gas cards, if you want to charge your phone, you're going to have to run your car, which is a potential fire hazard, using resources that you don't readily have. Comes with a one-hundred-watt solar panel that plugs into it, and also has rechargeable puck lights that attach to that unit, so that you have lighting. Again, the challenges with resources, if you have to start fires, things of that nature. So I want you to think about it, just not for unhoused folks, but if you look at veterans, for example, just to go back to the unhoused, there's about thirty thousand veterans that are homeless, about ten thousand are in California, and if you think people with medical needs, how are you charging those devices that you may need for that medical service? So this provides you with a base power supply. Secondarily, it's designed for disaster relief. You know the stuff that's going on in the Midwest and Minnesota and fires in New Mexico? We now have a fire in Butte County, for example. So this is an opportunity to have a deployable resource. I also do work in Africa and South Africa and Angola, and one of the things you may want to think about is that it's instant infrastructure, right? So this is a piece of infrastructure that you can drop in place and people now have power. So if there's a red flag day with PG&E and some areas out of power, this can be deployed to folks that need to have power full-time, right? Or for their devices, or running their house, or what it happens to be, and again, it's not house power. And then one other item to bring up is, since Amador County is rural, is that, it's considered a rural county, is that correct?
Yes.
So if you look at the Twenty Twenty Two Inflation Reduction Act, they put about eight-hundred million dollars into renewable resources for rural areas. I don't have it as fact, and I don't have good, you guys I'm sure have better knowledge of this type of resource or how to access it, but the idea is that they're trying to get rural power or renewable power to rural areas, right? So there could be an opportunity to access that money, the federal money, to then manufacture this product locally or have it deployed locally to Amador County and have it paid through from the government, right? I don't know exactly the workings of that, but just something to keep in mind, not that there isn't other resources. And additionally, I think California got six-hundred million in homeless funding, right, from feds for various projects. Another thing to think about from this perspective of having these power supplies. And so if you look at, another statistic is fifteen percent of the folks, this is their fifth time at the event. If they have some sort of power supply that may be able to access, they can access resources or get a job or move past their current situation, so. So any particular questions?
So the solar panels fold out or something, or?
I'm sorry.
The solar panels, do they fold out on that, or?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, they're there.
It also has a wall charger, so you can charge it at home.
So would you, would you keep it plugged in at home, like, charging?
Yeah.
And then when you need it, when the power goes out, you have it?
Then if you have, if you don't have enough power, and in the case of people that don't have a home, this is their main power supply, right? That's what's recharging. So just some things to think about.
Where can you buy one of those?
Off of my website.
Might as well get a plug in here.
It's globalcitizen.energy. But my goal, I'm not really going retail, it's more government.
I realize that, but...
But I just wanted to see the opportunity because when you try and go after some contract, right? You guys aren't necessarily putting contracts out for something like this, governments generally, right? They're looking at certain things that are known, but when I design infrastructure, I'm trying to go for sustainability and the next generation. I just want to get that in front of you. I mean, again, it was a privilege to donate and help Ty and Trixie's operation, but I just want you guys to think about that there's more options for how we move forward in the future.
Thank you, Greg. And for the two couples that won that substantial prize, it's a big boost to their livelihood because when you're living in your car, if you're expecting your car to charge your phones and keep you warm and keep you cool, you know, all the time, that is a huge drain on that vehicle. So if half of our homeless are living in vehicles, maintaining those vehicles is a huge undertaking. So St. Vincent de Paul is constantly fielding requests for funds for, you know, maintenance on vehicles that people are, that's their home. So being able to charge your phones and get your laptop, you know, get your work done without having to drain your car battery is a huge difference. If you're like living full-time in a vehicle, there's all sorts of ways you have to adapt. So we've completed our presentation. I don't know if you have questions? We're missing some important questions from Brian today, I'm sure, but maybe you gentlemen have some questions.
Sounds like there's a big gap. I look at people not knowing about resources with the county, specifically behavioral health, mental health, even public health. It seems like ninety percent of the people should know about that the county has resources and can provide help, so we're missing, somewhere we're not being connected to the homeless.
Absolutely.
I don't know how to remedy that.
And I mean, I think that the setback that the pandemic posed to, for office workers, you know, that we're still coming back from that. And so there's an opportunity to get, you know, new, whether it's new print material or new radio ads or whatnot, to kind of revitalize that conversation so that folks know what's available now. Because they, who needs it is different than who knew about it five years ago. You know, families experiencing poverty today aren't the same families that needed those resources five years ago, and so they don't know. They don't know.
Our county staff are involved in your meetings, correct?
We have had, we have had different levels of participation from year to year. This year, most of the organizing really did fall on Trixie and I and Hadley, and...
I'm talking specifically about the homeless...
Behavioral Health did not even attend this year's fair. Behavioral Health was not at...
The homeless committee meetings that occur monthly?
The Homeless Task Force meetings? Yeah, those are well-attended by folks who are, you know, on the clock with different agencies. But Behavioral Health was not at this year's Resource Fair.
I just wanted to say thank you, Frank, for showing up and visiting with us, and I invite you all to come and see us at the Twenty Twenty Five Homeless Resource Fair. As you know, it's a wonderful place for connection, connecting with our neighbors, whether you have a house or you don't, wherever you live, in a car, in a tent, in a luxurious house, it doesn't matter because we are all residents of this county, and we need to be connected as a community and support each other and love each other and validate one another.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have any public comment on this presentation? Any Zoomers? Oh, we do have public comment?
He was just signing in.
Oh, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very informative.
See you Thursday.
Moving on to five B is a discussion of transaction and sales tax used for roads, discussion of possible action regarding a resolution calling an election to submit to voters a ballot measure to levy a limited term, point five sales percent sales tax in the unincorporated county for roads.
Good morning, supervisors. In your staff report, I have that resolution. So at the last meeting, the direction was... So at, at the last meeting, the direction was, um, to draft a half cent sales ta, uh, special sales tax measure, um, for consideration of putting it on the ballot. So what you have is, is the, uh, the resolution, which includes the ballot question and the accompanying ordinance, which is a requirement. Uh, that ordinance is basically a template from the, from the state department that will implement our sales tax for the county. The, uh, one of the, so the question as drafted for a special tax is, uh, shall an ordinance be adopted authorizing a half cent sales tax on retail transactions in the unincorporated area of the county for a ten-year period, providing approximately, and there's a blank that we have to fill in, um, uh, of the estimated amount annually to be used solely for the repair, maintenance and improvement of local county roads. So that's what I drafted. If the board wants to tweak that at all, um, you're more than welcome to. It does need to include that, um, estimated annual amount of revenue. That is a, um, a statutory requirement that's come in since we did it, Measure M. It wasn't part of Measure M.
We have that number now, right?
Yeah, we have. Well, we have, from, uh, the auditor's office did prepare. And so whatever board the board, whatever number the board wants to pick to plug in there, we can. And maybe CAO Eily has a recommendation for that. And the only other, um, thing I would draw the board's attention to, as a special tax, um, you need an expenditure plan. Uh, we did not discuss that at the prior meeting because we were looking originally at a general tax potentially. So I have drafted language for an expenditure plan, which is pretty, I mean, it's specific to, um, the roads, but it's, it's there in the staff report. If you want to tweak that at all, um, today would be the day to do so. Or if you want to direct staff to make changes and bring it back. We do have an, one more regular public meeting worth of time to, um, get this on the ballot or special meeting. The deadline is, uh, what did I say, the nineteenth? July nineteenth would be your absolute drop dead deadline. One other thing that, um, that we spoke about before, the, the proposition that was on the ballot, the Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act, um, that was, uh, excluded from the ballot by the California Supreme Court last week, um, as a, uh, invalid revision to the Constitution. So voters can make amendments to the Constitution, which are relatively minor, but there's a difference between a revision and an amendment. An amendment is a, is a different process, requires a constitutional convention and, and a vote. The, so you, you could go back to the general tax or a general tax with an advisory ballot measure that we talked about before. The one thing, though, is that California Supreme Court, um, didn't address the, the component of that proposition that was retroactive. So if, you know, there was an element of that, that proposition that made it everything retroactive to twenty twenty-one. So if those proponents come back and they, they revise their measure and bring it back in a future election and continue to make it retroactive and you do do a general tax with an advisory measure, that still could be caught up in that mix. So if, if you want to stick with the special tax, that's fine, but, um, I just wanted to let you know. If you have any questions.
Uh, Greg, is, as far as the expenditure plan, it's just kind of general like this?
Well, I've seen, I've seen them very detailed where you would list specific projects.
But it says.
Don't have that deep level of detail.
But it says here the board can make any changes to the expenditure plan.
Well, you can't make changes to the expenditure plan, but you can, you will decide what, what specific projects to implement. It still has to be consistent with the, um,
Okay, so when you say the board can consider making changes, you're saying, before we vote on it?
Oh, yeah, now you can.
Yeah, okay.
But once, once it's adopted and part of the ordinance.
Okay, well, this seems pretty general.
Yeah.
It doesn't, uh, I don't think it rules anything out, or.
Yeah, I tried to capture.
Yeah, I thi, I think at our last meeting, some of the board members wanted to stay with the special tax and dedicated to that this is going to be in a, dedicated exclusively for road repair and maintenance. So that's fine with me. And, um, what about the actual, uh, estimated annual, uh, what would be a good figure?
I'd put it right at two point nine million dollars.
Two point nine?
Yeah.
I thought two point eight.
Well, the, the estimate for twenty-two, twenty-three is two point eight three. So it'll go up a little bit, it could slow down. So, um, two point nine kind of, it's about right.
Let me throw a couple of thoughts out.
Please.
I've been talking to quite a few people and, uh, I don't know, most people are of the mind that if you're going to do a half cent, you might as well try for a three quarter cent. If people are going to vote against the tax, they're going to vote against either one. And then the other thing is on the term. Personally, I think the ten year is too long. For some people, they look at that and ten years is a long time. I, I think we'd be better off, people would have more confidence knowing that it's going to expire in five or seven years.
We did talk about three quarters being seven year term.
Well, but whatever the year, they're, they're kind of different, but I just think ten years is, is a long time. People might be more likely to vote for it if they know it's going to expire in a shorter period of time, whether it be five years, seven years. The main thing is they need to see some improvements happening. And once the tax comes in, they need to start seeing more root, road improvement. We've seen in the past, the figures I think were, um, six million dollars that we need per year. And that was a study done about
Ten years?
Ten years ago. Now it's probably closer to eight million dollars a year.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to run some of those scenarios our Public Works is, to see where it's at, at least for the educational point of view.
I know we are getting, with the SB one money, at least we're getting some things done, but not as much as we'd like and we still don't have enough money for, even for a purchase of new equipment. We're having to set aside money for years to be able to purchase new equipment for our Public Works Department.
Well, the big thing is, is that if we, if we shut it down to seven years, we're still not having a good plan going forth of what we're trying to work for. You know, at ten years, you know, because we know, I mean, just top of our heads, you know, that a mile of road is roughly five hundred thousand dollars, if it's a complete new road. So we need to, you know, run that plan together. County Council had, you know, one of the thoughts that, that was kind of a weird thought, but is we could do a, a pay this back with a bond act and then do everything at one time. You know, I mean, do a whole bunch right now, you know, just, so there is another option sitting out there. You know, just getting, you know, a whole bunch of miles right now, put a bond act and then use ten years to pay that bond back.
Okay, but how are you, how are you going to pay the bond back?
Well, with the money that we accumulate in the ten years.
So from, from the sales tax?
Right.
Okay.
I like that as, as much as this because we are going to get self-help money. As long as SB one is around, we'll get the SB one self-help money because we, if we pass a measure.
Right.
Yeah, well, if we, if, if the measure passes, then we can always issue bonds.
Right, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm trying to.
Yeah.
So there, there is an option on that aspect. That's why I'm trying to look at the ten year mark to pay that amount back. That's what I'm trying to get at.
Yes, yeah.
I could agree with that if you agree with three quarter.
I can go three quarters. I still think we're going to hit our face on the, if we don't get this out to the public and what they want.
I, I think if you want to issue bonds and then pay it back with the tax revenue, that needs to be in the measure. You need to get that approval.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the, the advantage of issuing bonds is you get, you can get your money upfront and start doing more work. But this is close to three million plus the two million we're getting from SB one, so that's five million. Can we really accommodate more projects?
Oh, we'd have to, we'd have to get help. So that would be, yeah, to, to get it done, we could do it.
Would it be better just to kind of pace things a little bit?
The, uh, well, pacing things has its advantages too. And then we don't have to staff up. And then when, if the, the measure goes away, then we have to staff down and that's never.
Right.
And, uh.
And I think that, uh, the public doesn't want to pay for additional, um, staff. They want to pay for pavement.
Right, right. And, but the, you know, plans have to be drawn up, specs have to be, uh, uh, drawn up and projects have to be bid, bid and administered and that takes staff and that, uh, yeah.
Okay.
I'm not a big proponent of the bonding. I just think we.
You neither.
Pace ourselves.
Yeah.
Get the work done and as long as people see if we have, I think it's more than two million from SB one now because the maintenance of effort is in there, so.
Yeah, I guess maybe it's two point three this year.
About two, yeah, plus the maintenance of effort.
Or SB one, yeah. The, uh, if, if we were to go to three quarter cent sales tax, the amount would be about four point three million dollars.
Well, the people I talked to about a cross-section, two a person agree that the roads are bad. I don't think there are any questions. So I think a dedicated tax rather than a general is the way to go. And I s, I lean towards they're going to, if they're not going to pass a half, they're not going to, or if they're not going to pass three quarter, they're not going to pass a half either. So if we got four million dollars for ten years, we could actually do quite a bit. So if we're, you know, if we're going to go swimming, let's jump in the deep end.
I was listening to a KBGC on the way in this morning and they reported on Sutter Creek having the discussion and, uh.
And I didn't take that into account.
Well, they, people were, so, I don't know if it was half and half, but there were significant amount who were opposed to any road tax. But their discussion was somewhat corrupted by the, by the other tax they're talking about on their, um, on their sewer system. So you're talking about significant rate increases there and, uh, people were arguing we can't afford anything else.
Mm-hmm.
So I can go with ten years and three quarter with just, uh, year by year improvement process rather than, uh, bonding.
And I like people who like the sunset and never told me they want shorter. They just like the idea that there's an end in sight. So I don't think ten years is unreasonable.
I, I will say that, that, uh, uh, if it were to pass and have that sunset, we need to, uh, have our stuff in order in order to get that pavement on, in place rapidly to demonstrate that something's being done with it.
Absolutely.
In the event that that, uh, once that ten years is up, uh, to demonstrate that there's a, a valid reason to extend it.
Oh, very much so.
So, um, yeah, that would be on, on us to get that done.
And that, you know, are we talking contracted or are we talking staff?
Well, it would be, uh, partial staff, partial contract out, certainly the, the paving work, the, the road work, very much like we did with, uh, Shenandoah, um, where I think that worked out really well.
Yeah.
You know, staff was, was in on it. We used a consultant to design it and the contractor to build it. And it, it got done quickly, I think, and, uh, I, I think we had a good job out there.
I think staff have their hands full most of the time with, uh, taking care of things in the winter, which gets complicated, snow plowing, but the, the ditching and the, uh, trimming along the road. I mean, they, they have a lot to do.
We don't have a, a lot of management. You know, the, the majority of the staff in Public Works is the road crew. Uh, there's not, we don't have a lot of staff engineers and, uh, whatnot that, that would be able to do the majority of that work in-house. So, um, it is farmed out where needed.
Any public comment? Any public comment on this issue? Any zoomers?
No, not at this time.
All right, well, we can continue the discussion or we can jump in the water.
Yeah, let's jump in the waters.
All right.
So, um, so what do we, what's our consensus? Are we going to do a three quarter or a one half? Three quarter, ten years. Ten years, okay. Three quarter, ten years. And so what did, what's your estimate come out? I, I have about four point three five?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so I just rounded it down to four point three.
Always be conservative.
Okay, four point three is fine.
How could, um, the estimate that we got from the auditor's office was two, two point eight?
Correct, for twenty-two, twenty-three. Twenty-three, twenty-four is the current fiscal year, so twenty-four, twenty-five, it would certainly be higher than that.
Then you're talking about two point three on top of that, correct?
That we get from SB one, correct?
So you're talking about, you gave us four point three and?
If we do a three quarter percent, because that two point eight million is based on a half cent.
Okay.
Right.
I, I just look at that, it, it's a substantial difference. A lot more money to put in the roads immediately.
We need to do that. Was that a motion?
Yeah, so I'll make a motion then to, um, to move forward with the, um, resolution calling for, um, an election submitting special tax for roads. And, uh, the, uh, th, this will be a three quarter cent annual sales tax. Um, and it will, um, generate roughly four point three million annually in proceeds for roads. And, uh, we'll approve the expenditure plan as is to go on the ballot this, uh, November. Did we cover every base, Siri?
I think so. The, the resolution incorporates the ordinance. So if you adopt the resolution that includes the proposed ordinance, which you approve and then it actually gets voted in by the public if it passes.
Okay, so we're putting the resolution out for adoption, all right?
And just a reminder that, uh, uh, in order to put it on the ballot, it requires a four-fifths vote. Uh, and supervisor Neto is not here, will be, needs to be unanimous amongst those that are here.
Okay. All right, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, we will call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries four zero one. Thank you, gentlemen. I think that's, the people are going to be very happy ten years from now when we get this done.
But we can, uh, only provide information for education on this, so we need, uh.
I will send you some sort of summaries about what you can and can't do.
And can, and do, right.
So we need a champion. And I think we've had the.
The chamber.
Chamber of Commerce and we'll get ACT involved and go from there.
Yeah. All right, five C is General Services Administration. Update on grant progress. I saw Karen's here, so, and there she is. Good morning.
Good morning Chairman Crewe and members of the board. I am here to talk to you about the progress on our grants. And I provided you with a table that included a more in-depth description of what everything was. So there was the first part of that table that included, uh, grants that are in progress. And so I wanted to ask. And so I wanted to ask you if you had any questions about any of those. We have seven active grants. Two have been closed that are in this section, so there's nine in this section of the table. Okay, moving on.
One question.
Oh, yes.
Karen, I'm, um, the one grant, um, amateur, no, it's not the broadband, it's, um.
The lines are numbered, if it's easier.
Interfaith Food Bank Mobile Truck.
Yeah.
Awarded five eighty-eight, four ninety-three, and then an award remaining two fourteen, nine sixty-two. So, have they already purchased the mobile food truck? I thought they did.
They did.
So, what's, where's the remaining money gonna go?
The remaining money is for, uh, staffing to drive the truck for the first year and food to go into the truck.
And that's, uh, those are allowable expenditures then?
Correct, and at this point, they're providing me with the receipts that they're spending on the staff and the, and the food, and then I'm submitting those to the state for reimbursement.
And that has to be closed out by a certain date?
October. October thirty-first.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, moving on to, um, page five, there are applications that have been submitted that we're currently waiting to hear on. Did you have any questions about any of those?
Lot of grant applications.
Right now, there's only three.
And can you summarize all the broadband? There's three different grants. Can you, like, uh?
Are you talking about the awarded grants, or are you talking about the ones in progress, or the applications in progress?
All right, so there's the five hundred from this CPUC. I don't know if that's been awarded.
Uh, you're talking about number four on page?
Number three, number three, four, and five.
What page are you on?
Uh, I started on thirty-one and thirty-two. Oh, uh, I'm sorry, three, uh, two of ten and three of ten.
Okay, so you're back in the, um, grants that were currently.
Yeah, I just wanted to back up. I'm kind of slow.
No worries.
Yeah, I'm with you, Frank, cause I gotta ask about, uh, let's see, uh, number seven, so I'm, I'm still on the other one too.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, we do have a number of broadband, um, grants that are in process and also in review, um, application in review. A lot of these are being done in conjunction with another agency or organization.
Right.
So, that's important to mention here. Um, so, uh, the first one, number three on page two, um, amateur broadband network design, this is being done, this is our latter, what we call the latter grant, local agency technical assistance application grant. This was done in conjunction with RCRC, um, and they were able to obtain this grant on our behalf. They submitted the application, and then we're currently working through this. So, there's a lot of administration for the county on our side, where we meet with the contractor that's working on the plans, and they show us what they're working on, and it goes from there. So, we have, there's been, um, project, work product one and work product two that have been completed.
So, these, these are design and planning type?
Correct.
For design and planning for middle mile?
For, this is for last mile.
Last mile, okay.
Yep.
All right, but it's not, but presumably this would then lead to funding for the last mile?
Yes, that's the hope. It basically results in a shovel-ready project for us. So, number four on page three is the, uh, what we call the CARES Act Recovery Assistance. This project has been completed. It was to pay for a strategic plan for the broadband, and so we've completed that grant, and it's been closed out. The next one, number five on page three, is the CASF grant. We're doing this in conjunction with our Economic Development District, and they are kind of overseeing the, the process and the contractor, um, to help us, um, get our, um, infrastructure projects sort of squared away for the whole.
Does this dovetail with, uh, the previous grants, or does it?
Not really.
Not really, okay. Is this, is this gonna be for middle mile or last mile, or?
This is gonna be for last mile.
Okay.
And it is for the entire district. And at this point, I think there was a, there was a, an attempt to figure out how to spend this money amongst the, um, amongst the cohort, and I think the decision was to work on hiring a contractor to do GIS mapping for us. Are there any others in this section?
The other one I was curious about was number seven?
Number seven, yes. Number seven, so this grant, um, the Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant, we were awarded this grant last fall. This grant, we just received the, uh, finalization of the paperwork on the grant agreement, which means we can now start work. So, this is one of the things that I wanted to discuss with you a little bit, is that we need to develop at least one committee. Would be an oversight committee that we need to develop, and then we also need to have a public committee that includes members of the public that are stakeholders, uh, to discuss kind of how to, um, to put, you know, to develop the project and, um, and what should go into the RFP and things like that. So, uh, that would be our first step for this project, and those two committees could be the same thing. I think it's up to you all to decide how we should proceed. Definitely would wanna have Public Works involved in some of that, and, um, and then, you know, to talk about what stakeholders we would want.
We already have a public.
And our Public Works Committee.
Yeah.
What's the, uh, what's the county's match on that grant?
Two hundred thousand.
It's two hundred thousand, it's in-kind.
Okay, so two hundred thousand in-kind.
Correct.
Um, and how much was the grant for? A million total?
A million total, including the two hundred thousand.
So, they're giving us eight hundred thousand dollars.
Correct.
And they're gonna run it through all the hoops in order to get the, this, the study done. This is a good example of why we are frequently reluctant to go after grants, because we're gonna spend a lot of effort and a lot of time, uh, doing things that we, where we could be doing other things, and so, uh, we're gonna, yeah, the question is, you know, are we better off with it or without it? So, I, we're, we're into this pool already, so we're gonna push on through, but.
Didn't this one also open up other doors?
Yes, and that's the point about this grant, is what we hope to obtain at the end is a shovel-ready project for, um, priority roads. So, uh, they're gonna do a study on safety on our roads, and when they do that study, they will ultimately, the, the report would have, some shovel-ready projects that we can begin to work with, and we can then apply to other grants that are implementation grants that allow us to actually implement those.
Now, when we're talking safer roads, I mean, you know, we're way behind on our maintenance. But you're talking to like a blind turn that needs to be widened out or something like that. Is that the difference, or, or is it both?
It's both. So, uh, you know, what we, wha- what we expect to see in, in a report like this is that it's not only going to be, wow, you need a stop sign here, or you need to reduce speed there, or whatever it is. It's also going to probably bring to light that some of the, uh, road, uh, maintenance has, you know, has been deferred, and therefore we need, that's a super high priority.
You know, is it, you know, on the safer roads, does it count like on, you know, I, I know the bicyclists love to go into Volcano and, um, roll out into, uh, you know, go up Ranshor Grade, or go down Hale Road on the backside, and those are just not bicycle roads. Is that part of it taken in account?
Yes, there is a multimodal, um, component to this grant, that all of those things need to be considered.
Okay.
I think there's gonna be a lot of roads that are identified that need to have shoulders.
Yeah.
And that's, that is, but actually accomplishing that is gonna be huge.
Correct, and I understand that. I just, you know, it's one of those, as you're trying to identify stuff, you know, where, where do we go with part of this?
Karen, if the, excuse me, John. If we, this opens the door to other grants, are they gonna be probably this twenty percent match too?
It's hard to say. There are other grants that, you know, we have our eye on that are, that don't require a match, so, um, it, it just depends on the grant.
There are some of those out there.
Sure.
Okay, thanks. John, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's fine. I just wanna, I, I, I hear what Chuck's saying, and, and he's heard me say the same thing when it comes to grants, about the, uh, the administrative time that it takes to, to manage a grant. However, the end game in this particular case is, uh, speaks to what you guys were just talking about with a three quarter cent tax for roads. The end game is to find money to put on the roads, so that's why we're doing this. That's the hope here, that they're gonna identify someplace like a major artery like Latrobe, or Shake Ridge, or Ridge, or something like that, that we can actually go and get money. Now, when we started this too, the state wasn't in the deficit that they were in, so who knows where that's gonna go, but the end game is m- money for pavement, right?
Karen, our, our staff time, does that qualify as the in-kind also?
Yes, and it also includes committee time as well, so anyone who is volunteering on a committee, we get to include that time.
Oh, good.
Say, Karen, is there any grants that we're looking at for general plan implementation?
No, I, I mean, I'm not looking for those right now. If that's what you want, I can do that. Um, I just need direction to be looking for grants like that.
Maybe we should talk to planning staff and see where they're at?
Yes, or Public Works Committee, or.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else about this section?
I pass on a lot of, a lot of different opportunities, and.
I appreciate.
You're the expert, so I'm just passing them on, and you can discard them if they don't look like they, um, will be productive.
Yes, I read every single one. I appreciate you passing those along. Okay, so, um, on page five, again, this is the applications that we are submitting or have submitted, that we're waiting for notification on whether we receive the grant or not. Um, did you have any questions about these? There's four of them. Okay.
I, I love the extreme makeover, you know, commentation on that.
I have fun with project names. Um, so, uh, page seven is.
One question before you go.
Yes.
Most of these grants do not have an in-kind portion to them. They, they might have a matching, but not an in-kind.
Yeah, the only one that has a match is this one that we already, I've already brought to you, and, um, it was applied for on December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. So, it's, it's the, um, the Save America's Treasures Grant, uh, and I haven't heard anything about it, but it is that fifty-fifty match, so if we get the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the DA building, we would have to come up with another seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Doesn't mean the county has to pay that, just means we have to find that somewhere. It could be another grant that's not a federal grant.
The library remodel had a pretty significant match to it.
Okay, so then, uh, the next thing would be, um, projects for future funding, uh, applications. Um, these are projects that have been identified in one way or another, um, so the names that you see are not specific to a grant, they're just specific to a project. Obviously, we need more money for parks, um, and there's a, there's a pretty substantial list here of different things, um, to talk about. You may or may not be interested in any of these things. They're just things that, um, I keep in filed away in my brain when I'm, uh, researching grants, and if I see something that's appropriate, I would bring it, uh, bring it up here, um, most likely. Did you have any questions about any of these?
No.
Okay, so, um, the last page of this table just has other potential projects that are other things that I've heard here and there, um, that, that would be good things to keep in mind, but if there's anything else that isn't listed here or isn't listed as a project anywhere else on this table, please do let me know, so I'm aware and I'm keeping an eye out, okay? All right, so now, um, in the memo, I indicated that there were a few things. I already talked to you about the, um, the Safe Streets and Roads for All and the need for establishing committees or a committee. But there's also, um, an idea about planning for zero emission vehicles, and I know right now, we, we probably wanna wait on getting the vehicles. Uh, the, um, point that I wanna bring up to you all to consider is that we probably should be thinking about the infrastructure piece of that, so that we are ready when it is time to obtain those vehicles. Um, and so, this is, this is what I was thinking about, is that there are technical assistance grants out there that can help us, one, develop, you know, construction, um, drawings and things like that, that would help us with being ready to put the infrastructure in, and, uh, maybe do some kind of a feasibility study about whether, you know, what type of zero emissions vehicles are appropriate for which purpose. Uh, one of the things that, um, I've been thinking about has to do with hydrogen, bringing hydrogen up again, especially for those big vehicles in, um, Public Works. I have this feeling that the electric vehicles are gonna work for them, and so my, my thoughts are that we should probably revisit the concept of hydrogen for them and see what it would take, what would be required. We probably all have no, no idea, or at least very, you know, not, a very small idea. I'm looking at Frank. But I think that, um, I think that it would be a, a good, uh, a good move for us to think about the future and how we can position ourselves to take advantage of grants down the road that would be available.
Yeah, I guess, uh, with, with respect to hydrogen, it's, uh, it's definitely, you know, gonna be a big part of things going forward. How it's gonna play a role in transportation, I'm not sure yet, um, but, the way I understand it is, um, you know, you're gonna use it to run a fuel cell, so it's still gonna produce a current ultimately. It's not gonna be like a combustion, even though it does combust. So, you're still running electric motors with it. Um, now, you don't have a battery, so does that help? Because I've been told the batteries are pretty heavy.
The batteries are heavy, so my understanding is the, um, the hydrogen sty- type vehicles do better because they don't have the batteries.
Okay, so is that, is that actually, uh, now kind of been validated?
I think it's, yeah, I think it's out there.
Okay.
Right now, there is, there are so many questions. There are so many things that are being developed. The state has basically thrown us out of the plane and told us to figure out a parachute on the way down, and, uh, unfortunately, there are people who are thrown out of the plane before us, and we can watch them build their parachutes and find out what they're gonna do. The, uh, that's why I don't really think it's a good idea to start investing in anything right now. No studies, no, nothing until we have an idea, otherwise we're gonna sink money into something we're not gonna be able to use.
Yeah, I, 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 you know, ACTC was looking into some kind of pilot for this, so that might be a way to, you know, set up a station and see how it, see how it goes. I know there are stations in the Bay Area that will fuel hydrogen, but, um.
They even have one in Truckee.
They do, and I took pictures of it a while back and sent them to John, um, and, uh, yeah, it looked a little bit lonely there, so, but, um,
The ACTC was looking at it, more AT was looking at it.
Right.
For the buses, but it was gonna be in coordination with a bunch of other people too, a bunch of other agencies to try and make it affordable, whether it be the school district's already gone electric, who knows how long that'll last, but, uh, with Public Works, with any of the cities that wanted to partner with it, so I think it'll be some kind of task force that'll be established at some point to look at how are we gonna deal with the requirements that are coming down the road.
Right, and, and I hear all of you in terms of, you know, the idea to wait. I guess my feeling is that we would do better to start planning and having that task force in place now, even if we aren't going to take action yet, just because then we are, at least are thinking about it. It's something that is definitely going to come for us, and it would be better, I feel we would be better to be positioning ourselves to take advantage of the circumstances right away, or if we're up against a deadline, to be able to implement things right away, and.
That way too, you'd have the information sharing going on.
Correct. For sure, we're going to probably have some electric vehicles for the county. You know, we're going to have some sedans and SUVs and things like that that are going to drive around. And, and because electric is, you know, pretty well established at this point, it would make sense to do that. But there's obviously other vehicles that we aren't going to be able to do that with, or at least I don't think so. So.
Yeah, it might be nice if there was some kind of presentation on, you know, what is the state of the art for hydrogen vehicles and what the trends are, you know, what's, what does the short-term future look like? I don't know if RCRC can provide any of that or, or somebody. But, you know, here's the direction over the next five years, what you should think about investing in if you're going to do that, or when the time comes. This is probably what it's going to be.
Okay. Well, I made a note to myself. I don't know who that would be, but we can ask around and see what we can find out.
Yeah.
Maybe, I know the city of Jackson belongs to the League of California Cities, and they're all facing that. They're going to be on the same plane we're on. They might have, be a little farther down the road.
Okay.
We could...
Check into it.
...back on. But I agree with Chuck. We could, we'll be moving in just a big circle with no place to go.
Sure. Okay. Well, I'll see if I can find, find somebody who can come and do some kind of report to all of us, because my knowledge is limited as well. So.
Okay.
You might want to talk to AT, because they've already done some investigation into hydrogen.
Yes. They are doing, ACTC is doing a feasibility study. They're working, they have a grant that at least is coming. They may not have completed the award process yet, so, but they want to do a feasibility study, if you will remember, to, about hydrogen and possibly using county property somewhere to place that, like a hydrogen, either a plant, or we can make it ourselves, or a station, where our vehicles can refuel.
Okay.
Okay. And the last point I wanted to make was about the Amador Snowplow Project, which is the public works snowplow that was damaged during the storms. USDA has a grant available for that, and I can apply for it anytime. There is no deadline, but until the money runs out. So the sooner I apply, the better. I am waiting on a quote from Public Works for that. And once I receive the quote, and I know how much to ask for, I can apply.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that a diesel snowplow?
I told them to put all of the information into a quote, so I'm not sure yet, because I haven't seen it.
Diesel snowplow?
Yeah, I would assume so.
Yeah, I don't think electric would work real well up there.
No.
From what I, I've already seen a lot of pictures of Teslas parked up there in the wintertime, and farewell in cold weather.
The, the biggest thing that people don't think about, it's, it's not the battery, is it's still a low-flung car with a flat undercarriage. So you heist on yourself real easy.
Yeah. This night I was watching the news, a guy's got a new Rivian pickup, and he ran it off the road in Florida. He's heist it on a rock, and nobody will tow it. Because the insurance company told him, if you damage the battery coming off of there, we're not paying. Well, how do they know it's not damaged already? It's sitting there for months. People drive by it all the time. So, a new 21st century problem.
First world problems.
Yeah.
I would say with the snowplow, this is another one of those vehicles, electric would never work for something like this.
No.
They would run out of power by the time they got there, right?
Well, that's, you know, Kirkwood just bought a, one of the Ford Lightnings, fully charged, down at Folsom Ford. By the time that they made it to Kirkwood, it was empty.
Mm-hmm. That's the concern.
They had 24 miles to go.
Right.
Yeah, they never didn't make it.
They made it, barely.
Okay.
Nothing else in it, just two people. No load, no nothing.
Yeah. That's, that's the problem with, especially with the bigger vehicles too. And, and the fact that we, we have a lot of places to drive in this county. So when you start talking about going up country and things like that with these big vehicles, I just don't think it would work to have electric.
Well, we will have to go electric. That is, snowplows are exempt if they are only snowplows. If they do what we do, which is put a plow on a, on a truck, it's not exempt. It's got to be electric.
Well, it needs to be zero emissions.
Zero emissions, yeah. So, so hydrogen would work as well.
Right.
Yeah. But right now, there is neither a hydrogen or electric dump truck out there.
Right.
So that, that's what I mean when I, they say, the requirement's there, but the solution is not. And that's, you know, just things as simple as what the plugs are going to look like on future EVs. The Tesla plug is, seems to be dominating, but is that where it's going to go? You know, so.
Okay. Any other questions, or?
Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you for everything.
Love the comment.
Not going to be a USB.
I, I would like to know if, if you have a preference on what you'd like staff to focus on in the future. And in addition to that, I've had Karen show up sort of biannually. And if that works for reporting on grants, let me know. If you want to do this twice a year.
Roads are the biggest priority.
Well, I can, I can have it agendized somewhere in November, yeah, before that happens. But twice a year works for you guys, and that's fine. And is there another focus that you want staff, anything that you'd like staff to focus on for grants? Keep doing what we're doing. Okay.
I don't know enough about it to comment.
Which is what we do. She brings things to me. You guys filter stuff to me, and we, we talk about it, and we...
Right. And then I bet it with, with Chuck, and yeah, okay. All right. Any other public comment? Any Zoomers?
Yes, hold on one second.
All right.
Go ahead, Catherine.
Hi, this is Catherine Havitt-Volcano. I just wanted to thank the county for actively pursuing grants, and, and praise your staff for the good work they're doing. I, it's something that's long overdue, and it's, it's good to see it happening now. And as a county taxpayer, I'm really grateful for that. I will comment, make a couple comments on EVs since I drive one. One is that the, the Tesla NACS standard is becoming the national standard, and all the other auto manufacturers are adopting it now. So that's going to settle out. Also, in terms of large vehicles, Volvo is actually making, you know, tractor trailer trucks that are electric now. So I would urge, as you move forward, you know, you look at the whole range of what's out there, and do good research rather than relying on, you know, anecdotal stories about things not working well. Also, it's really not very cold in Amador County compared to those counties that had real problems with electric vehicles in the past. But, you know, hydrogen may be the way to go. I'm sure that there are places you can get information. I'm glad to hear Amador Transit is looking at this. I know that Amador Water Agency actually was looking at trying to convene a working group of people to government agencies to work on charging infrastructure, since you're all going to have to do it. So I don't know if they've abandoned that, but if your folks aren't in touch with Larry McKinney at Amador Water Agency, they probably should be. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you.
That it for Zoomers?
Yes.
All right. That was the present update on grant progress. Thank you, Karen, for all your hard work. And it's 10:30. It's time for our public hearing.
Could we take, like, a five-minute break, please?
Sure. Yes, we can.
All right.
We'll come back and open the public hearing. Five minutes. Meeting back to order. We're going to skip to item six, which is the public hearing scheduled for 10:30 or soon thereafter, as we can have it. Item 6A is a surveying department public hearing and adoption for the public utility easement abandonment requested by Ryan Hughes. I won't read the parcel numbers, because our surveyor is here. Hello, Roger.
Good morning.
Open the public hearing.
Thank you. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. This is an amendment that's actually proposed by the applicant and four of the adjourners. And under when, under this type of circumstance, we use a little different process than we do when we're abandoning easements, safer boundary, boundary line adjustments. Here, we require a petition of at least five people involved. We have that petition. It's been validated. And my understanding, these are large parcels. The smallest is 40, and they go up to 300. And it's for agricultural purposes. And these PUEs are doing nothing effectively except interfering with their operations. So we recommend that these two PUEs be abandoned, as shown on a little sketch. Any questions?
Questions?
So were they going to merge the lots together?
No.
Okay.
It's just an abandonment. It's an artificial boundary that they cross for irrigation of their purposes.
Okay.
Other comments from the board? Any public comment?
Move to close the public hearing.
Any Zoomers?
Move to close.
Oh, not at this time?
Not at the...
Second.
All right. We had a motion, a second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries 4-0. Now we're back to the question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to approve the resolution with the, for the abandonment.
Second.
Have a motion by Supervisor Forster. Have a second?
Supervisor Axe, seconded.
Oh, did, okay. Second by Supervisor Axe. All in favor of adopting the resolution? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries 4-0-1. Thank you very much. 6B is a public hearing. Consideration of the Planning Commission's recommendation to approve, propose amendments to the county's winery ordinances and noise ordinance to establish regulations for future wineries, tasting rooms and event locations in the A agricultural R1A single-family residential zoning districts, and in future enrollments into the Ag Exclusive Agricultural Williamson Act zoning district. Following the public hearing, the board may approve, reject, or modify the proposed zoning code amendments. With that, we'll open the public hearing. And Mr. Beatty?
Good morning, Chuck Beatty with the Planning Department. Today's hearing is a culmination of about 18 to 20 months of, of work off and on with your land use committee, the public, and the local wine industry to come up with an amendment to the county's wine ordinances, to help mitigate impacts as the wine industry has, you know, gradually moved from just wine production to more entertainment and, and hosting of events and weddings and so, and so forth. But one thing the, the committee wanted to do from the very beginning is to make sure that they didn't create unintended consequences by making existing facilities become non-conforming uses. So one of the reasons why your amendments are so wordy is that we, we really have a dual-track system. The, the language remains in place for any existing facility that was licensed and... bonded upon the effective date. So, if they do an expansion, they just follow the rules that were already in place. Another reason it's so wordy is that the county is contractually obligated to allow those existing uses for any parcel that's already enrolled into Williamson Act, whether that use is there or not. We've already allowed it via contract, so we're obligated to let those uses continue, even though, even though they don't exist. So, so track one is if you have an existing licensed bonded facility, or you have a parcel in the Williamson Act, you just follow the rules that are on the books now because they're going to stay on the books. Track two is you have a new licensed bonded facility, or a new enrollment into the Williamson Act, and you follow the new rules. And we're going to try to put those up on the wall, but I'll just, easiest way, we just, I'll just go through them for the chart that was in your packet rather than you try to read the entire ordinance. New, new facilities that had a two-hundred-foot setback, or excuse me, a less than a two-hundred-foot setback would have the following base uses. Their tasting room hours would be seven days a week, ten to six. They could participate in all the Ventners Association events. They could have twelve wine club events per year with up to two-hundred attendees. That's a daily max. And six other social events per year with up to sixty attendees per day. Facilities that had a greater than two-hundred-foot setback would be allowed those base uses, and in addition could have twelve, up more social events with up to two-hundred attendees. And then if they had a four-hundred-foot or greater setback, they could use the base, have the base uses, plus twelve more social events a year with up to two-hundred and fifty attendees, and another twelve events per year with up to three-hundred attendees. Awesome, thank you. So, that would be the section that's right down the middle. So, everything on the far left, that's the existing rules for, for wineries, which are, I should have mentioned that earlier. Right now, the rules are if you're, you're existing, or you're in the Williamson Act, you can have an unlimited number of events per year with up to a hundred and twenty-five people in attendance, so that could be one a day. And then an additional twelve events a year with up to four-hundred and fifty persons, as long as you don't have more than four of those in one year. And that would, that would remain in effect for anybody that has an existing facility or is in the Williamson Act, even without, without a winery. And then the middle column would be the, be the new changes. The column that's on the far right, those are rules that are basically on the books now, almost all of them on the books now, that are, that would apply to any, any wineries. One, the fire code official can make a determination whether they can have a single access or dual access based on the location, terrain, and so on. Two, the event capacities are limited by the parking accommodations, as we don't want parking off-site on the streets to block, block the roads. Number three is a new one, and that is that parking setbacks shall be a minimum of fifty feet from any residential property that contains a residence that's not on the winery owner's property. And then idling vehicles have to maintain a hundred-foot clearance. Four, still have to comply with all required clearances from the health, fire, and building departments. And five is an existing code that wineries that are on a private road have to have a road maintenance agreement that, or an updated road maintenance agreement that takes into account the existing traffic based on their tasting room where facilities. And then six, outdoor amplified sound ends at ten PM, and that's currently on the books. We changed music to sound. That's the only change there. All of the other uses that are allowed in Ag Zone, the exclusive Williamson Act Zone, don't change pertaining to wineries. It's just for the facilities, the tasting rooms, and the event locations. So, I also know that Land Use Committee is not happy with, with, with my removal of what was a major minor road classification system in there, and you may want to consider, I know you want to consider reinstating that. That would amend that chart down the middle so that facilities with less than a two-hundred-foot setback, or are not located on state routes, Shenandoah Road, Shenandoah School Road, Latrobe Road, Lower Ridge Road, Willow Creek Road, or Steiner Road, would only be allowed those uses. And then facilities that have the two-hundred and four-hundred-foot setbacks would only be allowed to use those additional uses if they're on those roads. So, facilities with less than a two-hundred-foot, or excuse me, not on those roads regardless of setback, would still be allowed the base uses. It's not taking any of the uses off the table, but it does, is more restrictive as to its application. And that, that language with the road classifications is consistent with what the board considered or looked at when the Land Use Committee made a report, I think late for fall last year.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it was December.
December.
And as the board may recall too, the Amador Ventners Association was pretty active in putting this together, and we actually took their advice on a lot of the points like not restricting the tasting room hours. And their point there was you don't want to compress traffic down to four days, why not just disperse it? Now, the counterpoint, they need to stay open though, too, for that to happen. So, the, the point today Chuck is to take comment on this, and then bring it back and continue the hearing and bring it back in two weeks?
If that's your pleasure, yes.
Right. Comments from the board?
You want to comment on?
More explanation on that, the road thing?
You want to comment on that?
Do the other board members need more explanation? Would that help?
Would.
Okay. Well, in the past, you know, having setbacks and then having, I guess, what we call a preferred road classification, because, you know, a lot of the, the roads here are rural, these are agricultural roads, they're not really, you know, they weren't built for heavy traffic, and traffic was kind of an issue facing people around wineries and their, their events and activities. The setbacks, you know, hopefully would reduce some of the noise that people were experiencing. I mean, it's, you know, it's not perfect, but that is what a lot of other counties are doing already. But the, the preferred road category was also set up to, to limit traffic on roads that just really weren't really up to snuff, and, you know, the...
With the volume of traffic that might be generated.
Potentially, yeah. So, so it wouldn't preclude them from having a winery and having tasting room hours, or having the base uses, which were, again, tasting room open seven days a week, participation in all the Ventners events, twelve wine club events per year, which, which was very important to all of the Ventners and the winemakers, that they wanted to be able to invite their wine club members out. And then special events would be six social events per year with only sixty attendees. That would be your base uses. And if you couldn't satisfy the two-hundred-foot setback, or, or you weren't on a preferred road, that's all you got was the base uses. Now, if you're on the preferred road and you can meet the two-hundred-foot setback, you're eligible for more, so you could have twelve social events a year, two-hundred attendees, so more social events and more attendees. But it's not like it's, you know, a huge, huge difference. And then four-hundred-foot setback, these are the, these are the, and you're on a preferred road, these are the folks that, you know, are going to be doing bigger events and things like that.
Okay.
That's one of the biggest complaints we got, especially in the Shenandoah Valley, with the wineries that are having major big events now, is that it's just driving people nuts all the time. There's always noise, there's always a lot of traffic. So, we probably should have done this a long time ago. We gave it to the Amador Ventners Association twice over the last fifteen to twenty years to try and resolve it, and they could not get along, and it fell on the wayside. That's not unexpected, you have a lot of different strong personalities there. Supervisor Axe and I decided this time we're going to take it on ourselves and get their input, and I think it's worked pretty well.
Yeah. As you're commended and planning for, they've been talking about this for eight years that I've been on some kind of a wine ordinance. Supervisor Brown, anything?
No, I don't have anything.
All right, you want to hear a public comment?
Just another comment before a public comment is by continuing this until our next meeting, Supervisor Renetto, who, who represents District Three, Five, and a lot of Shenandoah Valley will be here, and I think it's important that, you know, he weigh in.
If he doesn't own any wine grade property.
I don't think he does, does he?
I don't either.
Anyhow, you know, at least give him that opportunity.
Yeah, okay. Well, we do want to take public comment, so...
We do.
We're ready. Have any public comment on this issue? Come forward.
Good morning, supervisors and...
Morning.
...county staff. My name is Gage Marchini. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Abbott and Kinderman, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak here today on behalf of Domenico Winery. We have been involved at public hearing as this matter has traveled along, and I want to say throughout this time, thank you to the county and to staff. We appreciate what a big lift a project like this is, and how difficult it is for the county to balance the competing interests of a wonderful thing that is the success of Amador County's wine, winery interests and, and region against the difficulties that that brings for some residences, and we understand the difficulty with that. With these last-minute proposed changes, we received these about five minutes before this hearing with language to re-add the roadway classification language that the Planning Commission rejected at the April ninth Planning Commission hearing. We have previously brought concerns regarding the roadway classification language, and have raised that it may be inconsistent with the roadway classification treatment in the general plan. One particular element of the general plan that we, we feel is necessary to reference here is the economic development element, and specifically Policy E one point one, which is to encourage an efficient and consistent regulatory environment. With this ordinance, vertical consistency with the general plan is required, and we would request that the county at the next hearing, which considers this ordinance, analyze whether the roadway classification language is consistent with the general plan more broadly, or whether those definitions need to be further defined and clarified for that vertical consistency. We, again, appreciate the county engaging stakeholders in this process, and are thankful of the opportunity to bring our concerns to you here, and to be heard with, with open ears. And we support the decision to continue this matter out, to allow these new proposed changes to be further considered by the public at large and the stakeholders who are impacted by this ordinance. Thank you for your time, and I'm available here if you have any further questions.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Good morning, supervisors. Craig Baraka with the Fertile Conservancy. Just wanted to offer some words of support for the adoption of this ordinance. The Conservancy has been monitoring the progress on this since before my term began with the Conservancy. We've spoken at multiple public hearings, we've offered our own input letters and analysis on this issue. Feel the final product strikes a good balance between the economic needs of the wine industry in, in the county, while still making attempts to regulate events and protect the rural quality of life for our non-winery rural residents. The level of events being restricted are quite reasonable. All new wineries will be guaranteed a wide extent, a wide range of events sort of built in to their operations, including seven-day-a-week tasting room operations, plenty of opportunities to participate with the overall Ventners Association, to host wine club events where people can come in and experience an event, pick up their wine, that sort of thing. It establishes a good principle in that the level of setback, how far you are from your neighbors, determines whether or not additional events of larger size can be held. We'd also encourage you to re, support the reintroduction of the road criteria as well. The State of the Road Network and the impact of the wineries on it is sort of a critical issue, and we should establish guidelines and a basis for tying together the quality of roads and the size and scale of winery events. There are some issues with the specifics of the road designation. It essentially designates roads that already have a lot of wineries on it as the preferred roads, sort of regardless of the quality of that road. Specifically, I, I think the best example of this is Steiner Road, which isn't really up to high-traffic standards, but already has a large number of wineries on it already, therefore it's included on the list to allow larger events. But I think it would be something, and it can't be addressed here in the ordinance, but it has to be addressed sort of in county overall policy, especially in terms of like road funding and improvements, that if these roads provide, if certain roads provide extra event allocations, then those roads need to provide, need to receive priority as far as maintenance and improvement goes, and this is, you know, long-term, this is very much a, a long-term policy issue. But it should inform in the future the county's decisions as far as road improvements and maintenance, that if we are designating certain roads that allow wineries to have bigger and larger events more often, those roads need to be able to take that capacity, or can handle that impact. So, thank you for your time, and again, I urge passage of the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Any other public comment? Any zoomers?
No, not at this time.
All right. So, the feeling of the board that we will continue this public hearing until our next board meeting?
So, does the board want to make clear its direction to staff to make those changes, put those roads, those designated roads back in the ordinance, and bring it back?
Yeah. Seems to be the consensus.
Do we, I would like, I think the board has consensus on that.
Well, I, do the other two members that are not on land use want to consider that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Now, the comment, the comment that was made about the general plan, efficient and consistent regulatory environment, how do we need to approach that?
We'll look at it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, so this is just continued. We're doing...
I would, I would keep the, my suggestion would be to keep the public hearing open and just pick a date, specific date and time, and continue this public hearing, so we won't have to renotice, so.
Are we, can we be ready in two weeks? Okay. Well, then we'll have it on our next regular meeting at ten thirty, is the public hearing?
July ninth.
July ninth.
At ten thirty.
At ten thirty. Do we need a motion to do that, or?
You need a motion to continue the public...
I would move to, to continue this public hearing to July ninth at ten thirty AM.
Second.
All right, we had a motion by Supervisor Forster, and a second by Supervisor Axe. Continue this public hearing to July nine. Continue this public hearing to July ninth at ten thirty. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries four zero one. Thank you all for your input. With that, we'll go back to the regular agenda. Item five D is discussion of possible action relative to a letter of opposition from the Board of Supervisors relative to A B two-seven-nine-seven, which would enact AT&T's previous request to the CPUC to no longer be the carrier of last resort for the state. Direction to staff as suggested.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I brought this before the board from R C R C. R C, R C R C is the one that gave us a template to oppose this. AT&T was denied by CPUC. So then AT&T found a assembly person out of Inglewood to put this in. So here's a city assembly person that's trying to cut off rural areas. Now, this is not an automatic thing, there's a whole bunch of different portions to it. But as the Planning Commission just denied a cell tower on Hale and Shake Ridge Road, there's a lot of people that fight technology, but they still expect, you know, just a home phone. So that is, you know, something we need to be cautious about. So I'm, want to see where we want to go with this.
Yeah, I think we need to, to write that letter and have the chair or vice chair sign it.
Agree with you a hundred percent. There's a lot of places you can't get cell phones.
And that's, you know, I've, a couple of cell towers have gone up along eighty-eight, and I've been very happy a couple of times to be able to actually talk to my wife on the way home about things, and the whole distance I have her on the line.
I'd like some specific language. I don't think it's included in the letter, but I'd like just to put in there that, to the author of this bill, but to write it in such a way that it'll be readable for the governor and everybody else, that put in the language from the CPUC issued a draft proposed decision rejecting ATT controversial application for color relief with prejudice, finding incurable factual and legal errors that also misconstrue the CPUC's universal service rules, and say, "Did your staff not read this?" Because apparently they did not.
Agreed.
AT&T must, I better not say that.
It was a hold-my-beer moment, yes.
Legislators do things for certain, for a lot of different reasons, and part of that is what they get in their efforts to run for reelection, so. Is that generic enough, I think?
Right.
So I would like that language specifically included in there, in the-
Well, would you mind setting up the letter for the chair to write?
As long as you read it and make sure it's acceptable.
Yeah.
Might be a little too strong in some areas. Now, it's going to go pretty much by the draft, but I want that language in. I think it draws to the point that-
So we don't have another guy six months from now?
Yeah, these legislators just get lobbied, and their staff don't even read, what was the reasoning? Why did the CPUC reject this?
Right.
Any other supervisor comments? No. Any public comment on this issue? Yes, we do.
Thank you, Supervisors. Jack Mitchell, publisher of the Ledger Dispatch. Just wanted to share with you a number of folks that have reached out to me at the newspaper that do not have cell service, and are very concerned about what happens when emergencies occur, as well as knowing full well, as you are aware, that when you get someone that steals copper wire, our emergency services go down, and as a result, you have delayed response, or could have delayed response, if not for the excellence of your sheriff's office and Camino for fire. But this is a very serious issue, clearly from someone from a town, which I know, I won't waste any more of your time, but I do want you to know, I was contacted by some folks in the Willow Creek area up country that are very concerned about their safety and what this does. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any zoomers?
No, not at this time.
All right, we'll bring it back. Direction?
Yeah, it was a recommendation, it was direction to staff, so do we need to vote on this?
Probably not for direction.
Well, we're going to have the chair sign it. I think we do. Do we need a vote since the chair is signing this letter?
I think we need a vote.
I would make a motion to send the letter, yes.
I'll make a motion then to send a letter of opposition from our board regarding A B twenty-seven ninety-seven, which would enact AT&T's previous request to the CPUC to no longer be carrier of last resort for the state.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Get that letter copied to all the normal suspects, our senators, assembly, governor. Eventually, it might end up on his desk. Maybe he'll listen to Amador County.
In opposition to A B seven twenty-seven ninety-seven, and circulated to the appropriate agencies. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries four zero one. We are down to the minutes.
Who to approve the minutes as written?
Second.
All right, we had a motion by Supervisor Forster, a second by Supervisor Axe, to approve the June eleventh, twenty-twenty-four board minutes. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries four zero one. With that, the regular meeting is over, and the board will go back into closed session. Thank you all for coming.